Good evening, everybody. Called the meeting order and asked to pledge allegiance to the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Present.
Alderman Snow?
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Here.
Alderman Shuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kluckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsom?
Present.
Alderman Sabaka?
Aye.
Eight present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a bid opening, and it was notified by the city clerk that we've received no submittals of any bids for the sale of real estate at 1200 West 15th Street. So we will just remove that item from the agenda and send it back to the committee. The next item on the agenda is the audience request. I know we have a lot of people here this evening for special things, and I also know that the Rock Falls Optimists Cove is here. So Bill, do you want to step forward under audience request and address the council, please?
I'm Bill with the Rock Falls Optimists, friend of youth, and every year we sell our calendars. I've got Jim and Donnie going to help me tonight so we don't take a whole lot of your meeting. We've been told that this is the best calendar yet. I hope that that's true. They're still $5 apiece. The money all stays here in town for fishing derbies. The school each year gets $10,000 scholarship. I don't know if you've seen the band's trailer go around town. We paid for that to be painted on the side, and it says Rock Falls Optimists, and Jack Spencer, he paid the other half. And the money all stays right here in town. And the reason we come to the meeting, we want to give the chamber the first chance to get these. And to start out with tonight, we're going to present the first one with Mr. Bill so he can buy our first calendar. Am I allowed to come in here?
The chair's going to bounce. I brought it big. Thank you. Thank you. We got the fight back. Thank you, Bill. Yeah, we're getting it right. There's. I wish I was still. I sold one. I remember that. No, I remember. Remember the one? That's one. Yeah. Yep. Great at humor.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
evening that's here to address the council about a specific topic? If so, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is a special recognition. Now that we've tried to keep this totally secret, but we didn't put too much about it, and at this time I would ask the city clerk to read a resolution that's been prepared.
Resolution 2018-798 honoring Deputy Chief William S. Milby. Whereas William S. Milby has completed 33 years of total service with the City of Rock Falls Fire Department, beginning on the lowest rung of the ladder as paid-on-call firefighter. And whereas during his 33 years of total service, William S. Milby has conscientiously and capably served the Rock Falls Fire Department, the City of Rock Falls, Rock Falls Rural Fire Protection District, and its citizenry, and has demonstrated the highest principles of community service while exhibiting high moral and ethical standards. And whereas Deputy Chief Milby has demonstrated sound judgment and decision-making in matters involving the Rock Falls and Sterling Fire Departments as a command-level position under the Twin City Joint Fire Command, and his integrity, courtesy, and professionalism earned him the respect of the community, his coworkers, and peers. And whereas during his service career as a member of the Rock Falls Fire Department, Deputy Chief Milby has earned his way up the command ladder, joining the department as a part-paid member in July of 1985, becoming a full-time firefighter in May of 1987, received a promotion to lieutenant in June of 2000, upgraded to the rank of captain in November of 2004, and was named Deputy Chief of the Twin City Joint Fire Command September of 2013. Whereas the City of Rock Falls Fire Department and the City of Rock Falls have benefited significantly from the dedicated firefighting skills, services, and leadership of Deputy Chief Milby. And now therefore it be resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Rock Falls, Whiteside County, Illinois, members of the Rock Falls Police and Fire Commission, members of the Rock Falls Fire Department, and the citizens of the City of Rock Falls join in expressing their sincere appreciation to Deputy Chief William S. Milby for his years of dedicated service to the fire department, and express to him best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement as the second day of October 2018.
Mr. Logan.
I move we adopt Resolution 2018-798.
Second. Motion's been made by Mr. Logan and seconded by Mr. Snow. Any comments from any of the council members?
I think Bill has done an excellent job in the time that he has been with the fire department and in the command situation. As hard as that can be sometimes, I think he's proven himself, and anyone that follows in his footsteps will do a good job.
Thank you, Bill. I've had the pleasure of knowing Bill was already on as a part-paid when he came on in '85. And over the years, serving on the department as a part-paid member and working with all the guys, Bill was always somebody that would reach his hand out, as many others did, to help the new guys along the way. And it's been a very rewarding experience to see somebody that's come on from the start to the beginning and make himself up the ladder to where he's at today. And I truly hope that your retirement, Bill, you get everything out of it that you want. It's hard. Get rid of your scanner. When the trucks go by, don't follow them unless Smitty calls you to go do that with him to take pictures. And we really, truly hope that you enjoy your retirement. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. At this time, Bill, will you come down and join me? And everybody else, round of applause for Bill.
I know the Cubs play tonight, so I'll be here for an hour. I just want to thank the City of Rock Falls and the Rock Falls Fire Department for giving me the opportunity, especially your dad, George, George Logan Sr., who was fire chief and the one that hired me on as paid-on-call. For 33 years, I got to live out a childhood dream. I grew up at a fire station in Rockford. The captain there was from Rock Falls, Chuck Dampkin. He pretty much not let me do anything I wanted to at that station, and not too many people can say they lived out a childhood dream, but I did. So I thank you very much. As a paid-on-call firefighter, firefighter, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, I had the privilege to serve under the leadership of Chief Cook here. His knowledge, passion of the fire service is just infectious, not just to me, but to everybody. It makes us want to do a better job. So I thank you, this is where it gets emotional, for being there for me, being my mentor. Last thing I'll say, the hardest decision I ever made to leave, and it's funny you talk about the scanner, Monday, first day, Whiteside County Sheriff and a Sterling cop go flying by me, and I'm lost because I don't know what the hell's going on. I don't have a scanner. Everything's been shut off, and I'm not going to be the one that shows up at the fires or over here at the station getting into the politics. So for the last five years, I've been in the command side of it. We show up, not to run the calls, we run up to help manage it. And I will tell you that the young firefighters and officers we have are fantastic. We didn't have to do much. We get there, and I'm amazed, and I think that's how it's supposed to be. We like to think that we're going to be missed and that things are going to collapse a little bit, and that's not going to happen. And that's how it's supposed to be, that these guys are trained and they do one heck of a job. So the citizens of Rock Falls, Sterling, the world districts are in very good hands. So once again, thank you for letting me live out a dream. Thank you. Let's go.
At this time, I would call Chief Gary Cook to the mic for the next two items.
Good evening, and one comment with Bill, he's awesome all the way through, that's all he can say. And you could always depend on him, you always knew decisions to be made, he would make the right one. So it's my honor this evening, tonight, with the retiring of Bill, and for the fire department, for the first promotion this evening, we're going to promote Captain Chris Bowens to the position of deputy chief. And he can come up, and he'll be pinned by his wife, Angie. It's all in the details here. So scared the war out of passion. And now next, we'd like to introduce Kyle Summers. Firefighter Kyle Summers will be promoted to captain, and he will be pinned by his wife, Angie. It's all in the details here. Firefighter Kyle Summers will be promoted to captain, and he will be pinned by his wife, Lauren. And with Kyle, his grandfather Carl was my first chief. And don't do the calculation on the time either.
Cobbman's getting ready to run already, this would be the time if you'd like to leave, you can. I understand you. Thank you for behaving yourself. Next item on the agenda this evening will be community fairs. There's no one from the chamber here. The next item is four items on the consent agenda. I would ask, is there any members of the council that would like any one of the four items removed? If not, Mr. Clerk?
Approval of amendments to the September 18th, 2018 regular council meeting. Approval of the bills as presented. Proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, October 7th through the 13th of 2018, and proclamation for Public Power Week, October 7th through the 13th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second motion. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any additional comments? I'll roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Next item is first ordinances for first reading. There are two this evening. Mr. Clerk?
Approval of ordinance 2018-2399 authorizing lease of elevated water tower through June 15th, 2019 in the amount of $300 per month, and approval of ordinance 2018-2400 Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for the Schmidt addition redevelopment site.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance for first reading.
Second motion. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Shuneman for ordinance 2018-2399 and 2018-2400 for first reading.
Your Honor, can I just compliment Mr. Searing on all the work he did with the covenants? I thought he did a terrific job.
Any other questions? This is first reading only, so all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the carriers. Next item on the agenda is ordinances for second reading adoption. We'll do these one at a time.
Adoption of ordinance 2018-2397 amending Section 3222, adding subsection J for transfer of services to landlord.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2018-2397.
Motion by Mr. Logan, seconded by Mr. Snow for second reading and adoption of ordinance 2018-2397. Any additional? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Adoption of ordinance 2018-2398 amending Section 18152B78 for parking prohibited on Harley-Davidson Drive.
Make a motion for the adoption of ordinance 2018-2398.
Second. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Folsom for second reading and adoption of ordinance Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Next item is city administrative report. Ms. Blackert?
Your Honor, first tonight, I have approval of the supplemental engineering agreement number two from Stanley Consultants for the additional work being done for electric and fiber in the amount of $19,410 as recommended by the utilities committee.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Ms. Sabaka for the approval of supplemental engineering agreement number two from Stanley in the amount of $19,410. Any additional questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Next, Your Honor, I have, this is an amended agreement that had went before the utilities committee, so it's the same agreement with the lower dollar amount. It has had taken the amount of construction observation down to once a week, and you guys can see the division there between the utilities in the agreement, excuse me. So I'm asking for approval of supplemental engineering agreement number three from Stanley Consultants for weekly construction observation in the amount of $72,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Snow for the approval of supplemental engineering agreement number three from Stanley for weekly construction observation in the amount of $72,000. Any additional? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
All right, the second number two under me is, or other known as number three, is approval for the low bid from Gencini Excavating Inc. of Princeton, Illinois, for sewer and water extensions to the Schmidt property in the amount of $1,959,497.50 as recommended by the utilities committee.
I move for the approval of low bid of Gencini Excavating for the sewer and water extensions to the Schmidt property in the amount of $1,959,497.50 as recommended by the utilities committee.
Second motion. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Shuneman for the approval of low bid from Gencini Excavating Princeton for extension of sewer and water to the Schmidt property in the amount of $1,959,497.50. Any additional? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
The only other thing I have, Your Honor, was we were able to get both the actuary and the auditors here tomorrow evening for finance committee, and I, not meaning to take anything away from Glenn and the mayor, if you have that on your agenda, I apologize for this, but it's hard to get them both here. It's actually what we consider the most boring night of the year on paper, but it's actually one of the most important nights if you look at it from a fiscal standpoint, especially with the budget, or with the pension situation.
And you're all invited.
Yes, and we encourage everyone to be here for the meeting that can be here.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yes.
When you get here.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right. Information for response, Mr. Ardini?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Mr. Reese?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm going to take the item that had been under Mr. Searing's report and discuss it with the council at this time. A few days ago, or I don't know when exactly, but sometime recently, a company called KS Energy Services, who had been hired by Nycor to install new water-haul ship gas mains under the river and down Eighth Avenue to 10th Street, contacted Mark and asked if they would be allowed to use an area of the old Parish Alfred site owned by the city for storage of materials, pardon me, while they're doing that work. They have to pull the pipe under the river, and while they're doing it, they're going to have a lot of pipe that they want to sit around and be able to access immediately when they're ready to do it. I talked to them, the gentleman on the phone, I asked today, called again to see if I could get some more information, and I don't have very much. What I'm asking for tonight, I guess, is just the council to give me some indication as to whether or not there's interest in allowing them to use that area under some type of an easement agreement, or if you don't want them to use it at all, and have them go someplace else to find their storage site. The area that Mark was talking about would be like a triangular section that would be east of Eighth Avenue and north of the lots that front on West 2nd Street, and for about 200 feet north of the old, I don't remember now exactly what that building, but then, yeah, the radiator shop, yeah, about 200 feet north from there, and then making a triangular piece in that area, probably be, what, acre and a half, maybe, sorry, acre, acre to an acre and a half. And if you decide that you wanted to do it, then I'll try and negotiate terms of some kind of an easement agreement with them to bring back to you for final approval. But I don't want to mess around doing anything on that if the council says, no, we aren't interested in having them use our site at all. So I'll just thank them for expression of interest.
What would be the duration of the agreement?
Don't know that. I would assume for whatever time they're doing the construction project, but I think that's a little bit open-ended depending upon whether it could be, I suppose, three months to six months. That's my, excuse that, it sounds right, Mark. And this is not Nycor, this is a company hired by Nycor to do it.
Are they willing to pay for that?
I haven't gotten that far into it. That's one of the things I called asking about today and didn't get a return call back.
So that would be one question. The second question you'd like, are there any materials that your closet has got a problem about the road?
Well, if you remember correctly, when you agreed to allow commonwealth residents to use the site out here along throughout 40, that agreement has provisions in it that they will be doing environmental assessments periodically throughout the agreement and reporting to us if they're not. That's a little bit different, because if they're just laying pipe on the site, there's likely not any thing that would be an environmental hazard coming from the pipe that they have, that sort of thing to have. They'll obviously have to have vehicles in there to move the pipe and maneuver around and things like that. So that's another issue that we would probably try to address in any kind of agreement if you want me to move forward. And the same thing would be true with regard to payment. I wouldn't think that the city would demand some form of payment for use of it, even though this is technically like a public use because it's for the benefit of the residents living down in that area where the new main will be installed, to give them better gas service, but.
Jim, I think to expound a little bit on what Alderman Logan was saying, there'll be provisions in there that would protect the no further remediation letter that we have, the environmental no further remediation letter.
Well, yeah, and so I think it depends upon what level you would want done. Now, is this all concrete, this area that they're trying to, yeah? This area that they're talking about and that Mark is suggesting would be the area that's covered by concrete so as to prevent materials from leaching into the ground too much. But I think that there ought to be some provision for someone to do some periodic inspections just to see what is there and what they're storing. And I would expect that the city might want to have Hericon or someone like that do that. I don't know this company at all, I have no knowledge of them. They're from Franklin Park, Illinois, which is extreme west suburb, you know.
I'm moving the city attorney given.
Phil's.
It was discussed before with Nycor, the use of self fence and plastic, dirt, they can put on plastic, it can still go through the concrete in some places if it is contaminated. I'm too impressed with that because of, also, there should be something in there too about damage to that street by moving pipe and crossing stuff during the day.
They're going to be using Eighth Avenue and the right-of-way in their franchise to install the pipe along Eighth Avenue period. So this agreement wouldn't, I don't think, have anything to do with the traffic movements along that street if they don't violate other ordinances the city has with the district street.
It will, it will fall under, through our meetings with them, any damage to that road, just like rightways during their boring, will come under the restoration aspect of contract, yeah, not with this company, with Nycor.
You mind us, though, with them also, they're not going to use pipe on the road.
You might as well with them also, they're not going to use pipe, they're going to exploit, especially in Bear Malls, they're not wanting to exploit around that property. You said it was pipe, construction, there are problems in equipment, suburbs, back old, that type of stuff, but yet, all spoiled, we're talking about a little black, so all out, not by the site owner, by.
But it's important that be laid out in an agreement.
Absolutely.
Once we give permission, and it's not specified, then how you tell, you know, it's got to be done.
They're in kind of pushing because they're already moving in, so.
The way I'm finding right away right now, two hours, but the pipe there.
I'm going to say.
No, I'm just, no, right away right now.
Regardless, this agreement takes priority, so.
I guess all I have to say is, you're a citizen, but what, sort of, I would ask, you don't allow a site for them, and because this is what the best spots for them, where they have a lot of stuff like that, you can't help it out, you're going to have to, despite my first one, it's going to go through the river, then you pull, through the time, pull it, put it together, not make that, pull back from the river, one pipe, which is a good product, you don't allow the site to do this, or if I have to block out somewhere about the pipe, it's, might, I don't know, I want to see that, or, or go with that.
I'll move that city attorney be authorized to negotiate and with the advice of the city, the mayor and the city building inspector, to report back to the council before a final agreement is made.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Ms. Sabatka. Did you get that all?
Yep.
So our next council meeting, for any time you're able to get that done, will be the 16th.
Right, I told him that when I talked to him Friday, that I wouldn't be able to get anything done earlier than that date regardless.
All right, very good.
And I think I agree with Alderman Logan that we need to have some type of compensation. My figure was like five hundred dollars. We leave out our water problem, we leave out, you know, other sites, so.
I would, my consensus as to what that is too, so I can at least know the parameters to give.
What are your thoughts on the dollar amount for the city attorney to?
What, what do we need to, for farm lease, George? For the farm lease?
Two hundred, the, our buyer is like two fifty dollars, it's soon to come back.
This is, this is approved with concrete, so I, I can see where five hundred dollars would be.
I tried not to mount the first one, but here I will.
Okay. I would agree with that, too.
On this side?
Stronghold, five hundred dollars, okay with everybody, this has been suggested. Anything else? We need some of that.
After you.
For now, that's all.
Okay, motions been made, been seconded, we provided information to the city attorney. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuniman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Anything else?
Yeah, I told him tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Rickers, do it.
No, I don't want to, Your Honor.
Thank you. Harvard, it's Mr. Cox.
Last week, we had a bid opening for the CIP lining of the 24-inch sewer line on First Ave, Eighth Ave from Fifth to Leroy, and Leroy to the S curve at the high school. Tonight, I'm asking for the tentative award of that sanitary sewer rehabilitation contract to Insitroform Technologies USA of 17-988 Edison Ave, Chesterfield, Missouri, in the amount of eight hundred nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, subject to the approval of the low-interest loan for the project by the Illinois EPA.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Shuniman, second by Ms. Sabatka. Floor is open for discussion.
When will we expect this to take place?
Spring. And I would also add, the first two words of the item are tentative award. This is just approving what we know to be already, once the Illinois EPA approves loan, we, you guys will all see those loan documents and have to approve them, and at that time we would change this from tentative to the final.
So is Stanley leading this with the Environmental Protection Agency, Stanley's leading the way?
Stanley's already submitted the loan documents. You should have all the bid opening documents inside your folder from Stanley, they wrote a memo on it, and the reason that they're not starting till spring is because by the time the EPA gets around to approving the documents, it'll be late December or January.
What?
They're taking care of all these.
Yeah, they've submitted all the documents.
Anything else? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuniman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
That's all I have to mention. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mr. Padilla?
Yes. Through the Utility Committee meeting and approval, approval of the quote for Lincoln Street Water Main Extension with Kirby Cable, 17-842 Sumner Road, Beckett Towne, Illinois, 61063, not to exceed ninety thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Make a motion to approve the quote. Second? Mr. Snow, is that you? Okay, thank you. Mr. Shuniman made the motion, Mr. Snow seconds the motion. Any questions?
Yes, I have some questions and comments on this. I don't really like the way this is going. As you can see, you're standing right up against the twenty thousand dollar limit for a public works project. This was a public works project that was bid out, and the bid was not accepted, so on the surface, it appears that we've gone around and trying to outrun the Illinois statutes of, of public works project bids, that we're, we're going to stay under the twenty thousand dollars for labor only, and then we're going to be asked to approve the purchase of, of the materials for this, which, in my unprofessional opinion, is much like bid stringing, which is a felony in the state of Illinois.
I don't know what to say.
So under those circumstances, I would, I would ask you all to either table this or forego knowing. I would ask the city attorney to either verify or not.
Well, I had a question about this, because there's also below that, that the next earlier business is approval of a quote of materials from Ferguson and DeKalb to install water main extension from Lincoln, which is where this, this bid is, this quote is, to swallow court, and if this is all part of the same project, and you're trying to bifurcate it to avoid the bid requirements of the statute, then I believe that you shouldn't be doing that unless you've got good reason and you've got the two-thirds majority to vote of the council to waive the competitive bidding requirement before you do that.
Well, basically, this project is a water department project, and we're subcontracting Kirby to install the water main project, or water, Kirby, Ferguson is supplying the materials, so that's how I believe the project is legit.
I got a question. Rod, you brought up the fact that this had been a public works project before, and then it was for a lot more money, and now it's divided up into two parts. Is that correct?
It was divided up before. The labor part was way higher before, the, we still had the materials separated.
It was, it was two separate bids prior when it was public works?
Yes. We.
Well, no, it's, it's always been underneath the Utility Committee.
That's not what he's saying. He's saying that we, we bid out publicly just the part that we're looking at giving to Kirby now.
Correct.
The other part was always separated, as far as the part that you guys were going to be installing.
The materials.
Yes.
Yes.
What are they going to be doing? What's this job consist of?
It consists of Kirby installing boring and seven hundred and seventy feet of water main. We're actually.
Kirby Cable Service is doing this?
Yes.
Okay. So, but they're not.
So we're subcontracting them.
But they're not furnishing the materials?
Huh?
They're not furnishing the materials?
No, we are.
Okay. Why, I'm just curious, why did you do it that way to begin with? Why did you have the city buy the material at one place and then try to hire somebody else to do the work?
Because we're just subcontracting Kirby to install the water main underneath the ground.
But you subcontracting the other people to supply the materials.
Exactly.
The city doesn't make any of their stuff, that's the problem, it looks like, on paper, it looks like you're trying to avoid the twenty thousand dollar limit on competitive bids by separating it into two contracts, we've got materials over here and labor over here. That is not permitted by the statute. The statute says, if you're going to do competitive bid, you have competitive bid for a public works project. This is one project, installing water main, okay? Now, if the council says, we want to waive the competitive bid requirement, and two-thirds the majority vote to do that, then that's okay, but to present it like this, I think you're skating on thin ice when you try and divide it up in the beginning to avoid the twenty thousand dollar, that's all.
I, I would move to table this, and people that are involved come back with a better and clearer explanation of the whole thing, and a true depiction of what we're actually doing, and then we've got something, it's hard to make a decision on something that appears to be bouncing all over, so, and I, I agree with the city attorney, we don't want to put ourselves in any kind of position.
Okay, wait, we, we have a motion, and we have a second to the first issue, and Mr. Logan just made a motion to table this, so before we go into further discussion, is there a second to the table motion? Mr. Reitzel?
All right. Mayor, sir, technically, a motion to table does not allow discussion under Robert's motion.
Right, so that's why I just wanted to get the motion first, so that we can. So, because motion is made, excuse me, been made to table by Mr. Logan, second by Mr. Reitzel, as the attorney was alluding to, under Robert's order, which we abide by, there is no discussion.
Well, I can't add questions because he, he got before, I don't have a question then.
Yes, because he had made a motion, the minute he made the motion, just like any motion, you've got to have a first and second before there's a discussion, yep, happens infrequently, but it happens. Okay, so, we go down the second first, so there's a motion on the table, excuse me, there's a motion by Ms. Logan, second by Mr. Reitzel, to table this item number one. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuniman?
No.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
No.
Six aye.
So by motions, excuse me, the vote of six to two, the motion to table takes place, so we do not need to take any action on the first motion, because the table is superseded. I presume that that means it will be brought back when the agreement is.
Correct.
So, now to point number two, which we even haven't had in motion, just going to suggest that by the nature of the discussion, we would just approve both items in that. Or you want to speak to the second, probably your second motion to table, if that's what.
I would move we table item number two as well.
Exactly.
Motion by Ms. Logan, second by Mr. Folsom, to table the item number two as well. No discussion on that, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuniman?
No.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
No.
Six aye.
And I'm assuming that's why you had to.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rickers?
I have a question.
Mr. Schaefer?
I have a question.
Mr. Reitzel?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Logan?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, I do, I, I would wish that George Vanny have a speedy recovery and, and a complete recovery, hopefully, that we'll see him on the street in the future.
Mr. Stone?
I got a couple things, just an observation on how exciting it is to see the fiber conduit being laid in the city. It's moving forward, it's going to be good in the end. The other comment I have is, we're getting close to turning our clocks back, and it's a good time to change our smoke detector batteries, it's kind of life-saving, a good time to do it. That's it, Your Honor.
Mr. Shuniman?
Nothing from the board, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Kleckler?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Folsom?
I don't know.
They were telling me that they needed some issues with that type of the street, the sewer, for water distribution, and they're going to.
You ever share that stuff with the committee?
Yes.
On the mayor's report, I would entertain a motion for the reappointment of City Administrator Robin Blacker to the Whiteside County Enterprise Zone for the period of October 16, 2018 through October 16 of 2021. Second? Mr. Folsom, second by Mr. Snow. Any questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuniman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
The only other item I have is that if you saw the front page of the Gazette today, there was a story on there, coming out of the Whiteside County Economic Development Office's, Mr. Camarano, and I'm extending an invitation to all the elected officials here, that on October, Wednesday, October 10th, Mr. Camarano is bringing in representatives from both the area, Ecuador, Greece, Hong Kong, Lithuania, Philippines, Spain, and South Africa. Two years ago, we brought in representatives, he brought in representatives from China through the Council General's Office in Chicago, and that's where all these are on the Council General's Office in Chicago as well, to come out to our areas and visit with factories and other producers of goods out here to see if there's any market for the products that we have here that could make their way over there. He's going to arrive from Chicago with this delegation at about 10:00 to 10:20 in the morning, and they're going to go to the Holiday Inn Express here in Rock Falls, and then they're going to take a walk along the Riverfront Park and whatnot, and then they're going to load back up on a bus, and then they're going to go over to Sterling for a short walk through at the Wall Clipper Plant, or corporate headquarters, and then anybody that would like to, you can call the Whiteside County Enterprise Office, Sandy Prescott, down there at Whiteside, or give us your names, we can do it for you, and from 12:00 noon to 2:30, these gentlemen and representatives from these countries will speak out of South Valley Community College in room 1K10, it's on the first floor across from the gymnasium. So if you have any interest in that, you're certainly welcome to attend that.
Mayor, I'd like to attend the luncheon, not the tours.
Right, that's all I have. We need to go into executive session, is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yep.
Chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for Section 2, C20- Chair, would entertain a motion to go into executive session for Section 2C21. This will be for the review of closed session minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Reitzel. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.